I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Sean?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz, are you speaking into your microphone?
I am now.
Thank you. Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to our opportunity for public comment. Anyone want to come up and give you five minutes for items not on the agenda or pending before the board? If not, we'll go ahead and move on to the commissioner reports. I'd just like to take this time to recognize our neighbors to the south who incurred great loss over the weekend with the tornadoes. And I know there's some funds that are set up. One, I know, is called Team Kentucky. And if anybody has the ability to do so, I would encourage you to donate to those folks during this, during what they're going through. Any other commissioners have a report?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Last week, the Executive Board of the County Association met and peer. And we reviewed the agenda for resolutions that have been submitted by county government. We also spent a lot of time talking about the three measures that are going in front of the state legislature, which would call for the county to be able to assess a sales tax to assist them with building of buildings, jails, courthouse houses, and things like that. The one from Representative Hatton was selected as the first choice, and which will be received and supported by the County Association. There are two others that are similar, but it was decided that we would support one, and that was the one that was chosen. And so I just wanted to repeat on that. I mean, it's an uphill battle to begin with, to try to get something through in this environment. But nonetheless, we did endorse that one. Thank you.
That was a sales tax?
That was a sales tax.
Approximately how much again?
It was up to one cent. You decide, you as a commissioner, decide how much of that one penny you want to assess for a sales tax. And it's then put a vote of your constituents to see whether they support that. And if they, if we were given that ability to do that, and we took it to you, the voters, and you would endorse it, we would have sunset on this thing. And the money that would be generated from that sales tax would be specifically directed towards, in this bill, building of a courthouse, courtrooms, and/or roads and bridges. So it's rather comprehensive. The thought is that while it may not get out of committee, but at least it explains to the legislators that county government really needs a little more revenue. And this is about the only thing you can do that is because you have outside people helping to pay rather than putting it on the back of the real estate and taxpayers of homes and things like that, so.
Commissioner Schmidt, did they, have they done an analysis yet or determined how much money Lincoln County, or any county for that matter, would generate if it were to pass into law?
I don't think, Commissioner Aaronz, that we had that number, to tell you the truth. We didn't. So.
Would it be just specifically for those three things, roads, bridges, and courthouses?
Courthouses, yeah. I mean, that's all the, those are the three items that are most prevalent on the agendas for most counties right now. So that was alleviated for that. Now, as to how the specifics of all this plays out if it should pass, there may be a lot of opportunities, Commissioner Gibbon, that you could expand this. But right now, those are the areas that it would be utilized for.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Anybody else have a report they'd like to make this morning? All right, if not, we'll move on to our regular business. First item is a second reading and public hearing.
This is a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, titled "An Ordinance to Establish Overweight/Oversize Permit Fees for Roads in Lincoln County, South Dakota, Under the Jurisdiction of the Lincoln County Highway Superintendent."
Good morning, Terry.
Good morning. Again, going over, we're looking to establish fees for oversized, overweight permits. I believe it's pretty straightforward. Do you have any other questions? You need me to explain anymore on this?
Just for the public's benefit, what's, if you would do that, that'd be great.
As far as what part of it?
Well, just-
I think the ordinance is pretty straightforward. And again, I think all the ordinance is doing is setting a fee, or giving us the ability to set fees for these permits. Again, we already have the permit process in place. Been doing that for many years. Again, this is just gonna give us the ability to charge to do those, so.
All right, thank you for that.
Terry, are those the same fees we've had in place in the past, or, I mean?
No, we have no fees right now.
But I mean, others, counties have, or, you know what I mean?
Yes. Most of the other larger counties have oversized, overweight permit fees.
And those rates are approximately what we would be charging?
And again, the rates, you know, which is part of the resolution, and again, we'd get into that. I mean, if we, I can go through them here. Oversized is fifty bucks, fifty dollars. Overweight, eighty thousand to one hundred thousand is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Overweight, hundred thousand, one to one hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine is a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And anything over a hundred and fifty thousand pounds is two hundred and twenty-five thousand, or two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Those are for a single, single trip. And again, you have a yearly one on those as well, or an annual, annual permit. Oversized for an annual permit is a hundred dollars. Eighty thousand to a hundred thousand is three hundred dollars. Hundred thousand, hundred thousand and one pound to one hundred and forty-nine, nine ninety-nine is four hundred and fifty dollars. And overweight for a hundred and fifty thousand plus is six hundred and fifty dollars, annual fee, so.
And that in a roundabout way was my question, if it was comparable to other counties and what they're doing?
Yes, these fall in line really close with what other counties are doing, so.
Terry?
Thank you.
So, kind of, for the benefit of the public, and for, you know, those who this is going to affect, tell me the mechanics of how this works in terms of, and I'll use the best example that is probably the most prevalent, is a farmer with a semi truck and/or somebody else with a semi truck who, you know, delivers goods on county roads here in the county. So if this thing passes today, what happens next? And then what do they do, and how do they know that they have to do this and all that?
So, a couple parts to your question there. I believe most farm equipment would be, is exempt right now, I believe. So as far as delivery vehicles, it's gonna be, and a lot of it, a lot of the permitting which we do now affects construction companies, moving equipment, or any heavy equipment, extremely heavy equipment. I know another one is, or, production places such as Harvard Industries up at the T exit up there. I know they go, we run quite a few of their permits through us. I guess, I think we have been, as far as a lot of the people that are already doing the permitting, or that we permit for, I think we have a lot of email addresses, or we have contact information for them. And we have been notifying them that this is coming. And I, and we let them know early this year that we were gonna implement this, but I just didn't have a timeframe on it. So I believe a lot of them are, that are of the understanding that this is coming. So, one thing that may affect farmers, again, is the oversize. As far as hauling, you know, because you get a lot of them that are moving bins or buildings down the road. Again, they would, they would need an oversized permit for that. And again, just a single trip for that is fifty dollars, for that.
And then in terms of, we put this ordinance in place, and you've had discussions with sheriff's office about implementation already, or not? You know, and here's where I'm going with that. You know, for example, we passed this. We've got to hand it off to our sheriff's department. They probably need to get time to get educated on how to implement it in terms of their departmental policies and all of that. But then, you know, how does it get enforced?
My, I guess I'm not sure how much the sheriff, sheriff's department enforces oversized or overweight permits. I'm sure they typically probably don't make stops based just on that.
Right.
So most of this is gonna be through carrier enforcement, through the state. That would be, that would probably have enforcement on this.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I know, Terry, there'll be a lot of grain moving after the first of the year. There always is, you know, those in the agricultural sector, so it's important that they're aware.
Again, I just want to emphasize that nothing as far as the permit is changing in itself. I mean, we have a permit set up, you know, nothing in that is changing, is different than this. This is just establishing fees to charge for those, so.
All right, thank you, Terry. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the ordinance? That's in the audience. Anybody here that would like to speak against it? All right, if not, I'd ask for a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll so moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to item two on our agenda.
So the next item we have, we'll, we're gonna set the fee rate. And again, these are the numbers that I just spoke of earlier, for this, for the ordinance. Sean, do you want me to read this entire resolution?
I can read it if you would like. "This is a resolution to establish overweight/oversized permit fees, whereas it is in the best interest of the county to develop and preserve Lincoln County roads and bridges by assuring that standard guidelines and permitting processes for overweight/oversized permits are in place. And whereas Lincoln County ordinance permits the Lincoln County Highway Superintendent to promulgate fees, rules, and regulations for the permitting of vehicles and equipment exceeding the maximum weight or size set by state law in SDCL Chapter 3222 on Lincoln County roads under his jurisdiction. And whereas the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, in accordance with Lincoln County ordinance, seeks to adopt said fees, rules, and regulations for enforcement as contemplated by the ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners that the Lincoln County Highway Department is hereby authorized to charge the following fees: Single trip permits, oversized, fifty dollars. Overweight, eighty to one hundred thousand pounds, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Overweight, one hundred thousand, one to one hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine pounds, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Overweight, one hundred and fifty thousand pounds and over, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Annual permits, oversized, one hundred. Overweight, eighty to one hundred thousand pounds, three hundred. Overweight, one hundred thousand, one to one hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine pounds, four hundred and fifty dollars. And overweight, one hundred and fifty thousand pounds and over, six hundred and fifty dollars. All fees collected shall be deposited to the Lincoln County Road and Bridge Fund."
Thank you. We've heard the request. Consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Terry.
Sure.
Terry, where did the dollar amounts in here come from?
These are, these are standard, we checked several of the other counties, and this is kind of what standard rates are, what other counties are charging.
Okay, thank you.
Terry, just for the record, what does it cost to repair, let's say, a mile of road that was damaged by vehicles or by trucks being overweight?
That depends on the severity of the damage.
On the average, what would you say?
For the amount of money that we're gonna raise on this, it probably wouldn't cover one patch on that, in a mile. I mean, maybe a five-hundred-foot patch.
Yeah.
But it's gonna be something. It'll be some additional funding. And again, if we were to have these, and again, these, these numbers, I have year-to-date on these, like, these are effective as of maybe the end of October, early November. But we would have collected almost twenty-six thousand, you know, so far this year, if we would have had it in place this year, so.
All right, thank you, Terry. Any more questions for staff? If not, I'd consider a motion.
I'll mo, so, I'll offer that motion to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll move on to item three on our agenda, which is a second reading and public hearing.
"This is a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, titled 'An Ordinance to Establish Access Permit Fees for Accesses Abutting a Lincoln County, South Dakota, Road Under the Jurisdiction of the Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.'"
Thanks. Terry, go ahead.
All right. Again, another ordinance, established, just established fees for driveways access permits. Again, we've already have in place the permitting process. Most of the rules and guidelines are within that, were within that permitting process already. So again, this ordinance is basically just gonna set fees, or give us the ability to set fees to collect for those.
And how were the fees determined, Terry?
Again, with the fees on this, I checked around with what other counties are charging. I was gonna go a little higher than them, because I don't know how, how often they redo their fees or re, or update their fees. But I ended up, I opted to go with charging fairly close to what they are, for dollar amounts, so. And again, these fees are gonna be to hopefully recover some of my time on these, because I have, it varies between one and probably two, three hours per permit that we have. I need to go out and do inspections to make sure they're built properly, or see if they can be built in the space that they want. Again, so this is just gonna hopefully recoup some of my time on this, so.
All right, thank you for that. Does any of the board have questions for staff?
I think I asked you previously, Terry, in an emergency situation that we haven't had problems in the past concerning-
Yeah, and I, again, I-
-those in agriculture needing a temporary driveway or something?
Again, I, I mean, I would, you know, in the last nine years since I've been working with the driveways, I have not had an instance such as that. Not saying it wouldn't happen, but I, I mean, I think there's, there's some flexibility to give variance on that, you know. I mean, there, we've had in the past. I've had contractors or property owners, you know, I drive, driving around, and you see a pipe in the ditch. It's like, hey, what's going on here? Is contact landowner? Oh, we're building this, this, we're gonna build a driveway here. Well, I don't have a permit. Oh, I need to do a permit? Yeah. So it's like, well, contractor's coming tomorrow. I was like, well, I'm okay with it here. You know, the location of your driveway. But I said, I need a permit. Your contractor can build it. I'll get the, get the permit, you know, a day later. Go out there, and it's already done, which is fine. Again, so there are variances that, up to the superintendent, to give a, to give lenience or variance on that, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come up and state their views regarding the public hearing, either for or against? All right. If not, then I would ask for a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll move to approve the ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We'll move on to item four on the agenda.
"This is a resolution to establish access permit fees. Whereas it is in the best interest of the county to develop and preserve Lincoln County right of ways, drainage, and roads by assuring that standard guidelines and permitting processes for access permits are in place. And whereas Lincoln County ordinance permits the Lincoln County Highway Superintendent to promulgate fees, rules, and regulations for the permitting of accesses abutting a Lincoln County road under his jurisdiction. And whereas the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, in accordance with Lincoln County ordinance, seeks to adopt said fees, rules, and regulations for enforcement as contemplated by the ordinance, now therefore be it resolved by the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners that the Lincoln County Highway Department is hereby authorized to charge the following fees: Residents' access permit, eighty dollars. Field farm permit, fifty-five dollars. Commercial permit, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Improvement to existing access permit, twenty-five dollars. Temporary access permit, twenty-five dollars. All fees collected shall be deposited to the Lincoln County Road and Bridge Fund."
Thank you. If no one has any questions, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Excuse me, second.
Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. I'll move on to item five on our agenda.
Thanks, Terry.
Mayor Lundstrom. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good. You can adjust that mic so anybody listening can hear you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm here to represent the City of Canton. Like most cities in our county and state, Canton is experiencing aging infrastructure and lack of funding needed to complete the projects. In the event that restrictions are not lifted for funding the county received for water, water and sewer projects, the City of Canton would like to state our case and perhaps be allowed to receive some of these funds. We have a project that's been on hold for years longer than I've been mayor. I'm not going to try to explain or pretend that I know all the ins and outs of our infrastructure. I do know that any expansions that we do have to the west will put more pressure on problems we already have. So I'm gonna have our city engineer, Myron Adams, come and explain to you exactly what the project is that we would like to see go forward.
Morning, Adam.
Good morning, commissioners.
Myron.
Good morning.
The project that the mayor has alluded to, we first got involved in this project probably about 2010. And at that time, we were looking at the Beaver Creek, the old Beaver Creek Lift Station right here on Highway 18. In 2011, 12, and 13, the city went through that construction project of improving Beaver Creek Lift Station. Spent about a million and a half dollars on making those improvements. And now what we're, what we know that needs to be done as well is the gravity sewer collection system downstream of the, of this Beaver Creek Lift Station. Currently, the Beaver Creek Lift Station pumps into a, a gravity line that basically goes from Blair Street all the way down to the city maintenance, city maintenance yard. It's about fourteen blocks. Currently, the city has issues with capacity on that entire stretch, especially during rainfall events. There's quite a bit of infiltration into the line across the entire community, which, which is nothing new for a number of communities. So the, the new lift station is, has, is set for the city for years. But we're running into constraints on that downstream collection where there's been sewer backups in homes. And there's also been discharges from the lift station at times into the creek itself to alleviate additional damage to homes. So to, to help alleviate or minimize those impacts, you know, this infrastructure project, project is about a three and a half to four million dollar project for the city. It would improve the sanitary sewer, the aging water system, the storm, storm sewer collection system, and also the street surfacing as well. So it's a major infrastructure project for the south, south part of the city. You know, basically, the project it eliminates or helps eliminate the, the backups in the sanitary sewer system, and will also help continue the growth on the west side of Sioux Falls, or west side of Sioux Falls, excuse me, the west side of Canton and to the north of, kind of the northwest corner of the community. That's what the, the lift station serves. So making the improvements downstream will help, help with the capacity issues, and also help serve the area to the west and northwest of the, of the community. With that, I know I rambled a little bit on. If you have specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Does anybody have any questions for Myron?
Is this just to retrofit our existing lines, or is it a new one for help, further development of the city or anything like that?
It would, so, one, it's a replacement of, it's somewhat of a retrofit, because we're replacing aging infrastructure, both the water and the sanitary sewer. But especially with the sanitary, on the sanitary sewer size, it would be upsized for a couple of reasons. One, to make sure that we can account for additional growth on the west side of Canton. And also to help with the, to eliminate the sewage backups into the residents along the, along this stretch. So there's the two main reasons for upsizing the sanitary sewer. With the water main, we'd probably upsize the water main a little bit as well, just to help with the overall fire protection on the south end of town.
And then does the, does the main lift station, that can take on the extra capacity?
Yes, that was done back in, improvements to that lift station was done back in 2012, 2013. We've increased the pump sizes at that lift station, back when we did the improvements to the Beaver Creek Lift Station. So that is all, the infrastructure at the main lift station is in place for this.
What's your, I mean, right now, how are you looking at having to finance that project? Just out of curiosity.
Right now, we have no funds to go forth with this project. We have received six hundred? Yeah, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, and that will go towards that, beginning that project.
So is the six hundred and thirty-six part of the three and a half to four? I mean, the three and a half to four is the total cost projection?
Correct.
Okay. So you would have that much to contribute?
Yep.
Is this a project, Mayor, that is capable of being segmented out? Do you have to do the whole thing, or is it, can you do a certain portion of it in, in time? You know, as, as funds permit, or whatever?
Sure, you know, everything will help.
Yeah.
As long as you've got, you know, if, if we got a plan in place where you can do a few blocks a year, you know, obviously, you wanna, you want a big, you know, you want to take on as much as you can upfront for monetary reasons and, you know, project solution reasons. But there's, yeah, if this can, even if this can happen over two, three, four, five years, if it gets done, will be a benefit to the community.
Myron, which one of these three projects is the most critical to the city of Canton?
Right, likely the Beaver Creek Lift Station, the trunk sewer improvements projects. Because I think it has the most impact to the residents on the south end of the community and helping with their, some of the, you know, the backups into the sewer system.
And so if we segmented that out, how much does that project cost?
That's, you've got, we're penciling about a three and a half million dollar project on that.
So just that project alone is three and a half, four?
Correct.
So then what is the cost of the other two projects?
The, let's see here. So the water main on, so there's two water main projects. Basically, the cities, over the years, have been trying to get rid of their old four-inch cast iron water mains and going to an eight-inch PVC water main, basically to minimize the, the water service outages, and also to improve fire flows. So the one you're seeing there on the- So the one you're seeing there on the screen, that's on 10th Street and Broadway down in the south, again, on the south end of town. The project cost on that is about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars to replace those three blocks of water main. And then the other project that the city has been, has looked at in the past is First Street, replacing the old four-inch water main on First Street between Dakota Street and Cedar Street. That's kind of in your north central part of Canton. And that's about four, four and a half blocks. So that kicks the estimate up to about seven hundred and fifty thousand.
How much was that last figure?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Is that in addition to the five sixty?
Yes, yes, they're all separate, all separate unto themselves because the city would, you know, would try to tackle those projects separately.
Sure.
Sandy, how much is the City of Canton spending on these various projects in your next year's budget or budget? Do you have?
We haven't budgeted anything for?
Any of it yet?
No, not at this time.
In years past, what have you, have you put a certain number aside for these kinds of upgrades?
We put about fifty thousand back in reserve for improvements, but again, that doesn't get you very far.
No.
Sir, I'm sorry. If you, I just want everybody to be able to hear you that may be listening, if you want to come on up to the microphone, please.
You know, the city puts away between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars a year for system improvements. And obviously, over the last several years, we've done lift station improvements, we've done the lagoon improvements. You know, the only place that money comes from, from these are from user rates. So.
How much does the city have in reserve right now?
Two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand.
Have you guys looked at going to the State Water Board for loans, grants?
We have. The city in itself, I think our debt capacity is eight million. We're about six and a half. So, you know, you're talking a three and a half million dollar project that's of a magnitude that we can't do under our current debt.
Are there any grants or economic development funds available from State Water Board?
Not that we've come across.
Anybody else have any questions?
Do you have a specific amount you're looking at? Besides eleven million?
I don't know if there's a specific amount. I mean, obviously, anything is going to help facilitate a project, you know, when you're looking at three and a half million, I mean, you've only got a million and a half in debt capacity, I mean, there's limited amounts you can do on that large scale of a project.
How's the Beaver Creek project? Has that been engineered? I mean, is it ready to roll or where is it at in the course of things?
We've done, we've done, basically, we've done preliminary work, but at this point in time, if we were allowed to get going in the, you know, winter, spring of '22, you'd see construction in '23.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or anything else you want us to know today?
No, thank you for listening to us.
You bet, and it'll be an ongoing discussion about how these funds are going to get spent or distributed.
Exactly.
So thank you, thank you for coming down today.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sally. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item six on our agenda. Joel, are you teeing this one up?
Sure, can. So Lincoln County is an investor and a participant in the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. For those of you who don't know, Sioux Metro Growth Alliance is a new name for two different organizations, the Minnehaha County Economic Development Association, as well as the Lincoln County Economic Development Association. And so they rebranded in order to kind of go beyond just Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties, hence the name Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. Normally, each of the municipal and/or county entities that participate on the advisory boards will do a resolution at the beginning of every year to, you know, basically assign or volunteer who the member of the board is going to be that participates on the Growth Alliance. So all that this resolution is, is, you know, reinforcing or making it official in terms of which persons on this board are going to continue to participate on the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. And so, you know, I've been participating in it for the last two and a half to three years since I've been on this board. It's been a fantastic opportunity and, you know, I'll volunteer to continue on there. And I think we just need to make it official here with this resolution. And then we need an alternate as well. So if there's any other members of this commission who'd like to serve as an alternate, it would be appreciated.
So just, I see that the signatory on the resolution is a mayor.
Yeah, I think that.
Is that, is that just a typo?
Yeah, I didn't make this document. It came from Sioux.
It would be, that would be necessary.
We got to fix that to chairman, chairwoman.
If I may, normally, we make these appointments on the first meeting of January of each year. Is that the correct time to do this resolution? A resolution like it?
That was my question too, is that normally we make all these appointments at our first meeting, but is there, is there a need to do it now?
The, at our last advisory board member, we talked, meeting, we talked about doing it now instead of January. We did, the only reason being is because we wanted to have the members of the advisory board done at the same time as our corporate partners. This actually was discussed, I think it was brought up by myself as well as one of the other members from Minnehaha County, is that county commissions tend to usually do it after the first of the year anyway. So this commission can do whatever it wants. It's just that the advisory board wanted to align everybody on the same timetable. So I have, you know, I have no, you know, what do you want to say? If I had my druthers, I don't care when we do it.
Right.
You know, it doesn't matter to me.
I would just say that they probably need to go through it. It looks like there's just some discrepancies in the document that probably need to be corrected.
I'd agree. Madam Chair, do you want to table this until after the first of the year? That gives them enough time to?
We can, we can do it on the 28th, we can do it at the first of the year.
It looks like Mr. Fonker needs this by January 14th, and our first meeting in January is the 4th. So we would be able to add this to the list of our normal appointments. And then that way, in future years, if there's any commissioner turnover, we can do it when their term starts.
Okay, sure, that makes sense. Yeah, let's just do that and then that gives them a chance to correct some of the things in the resolution that don't look to be correct. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item seven on our agenda, which is the redistricting. I believe we have somebody here from CCAG perhaps. This is an informational meeting, so I'm going to turn the floor over.
Sounds good. So. Okay. So normally, Jason's here to give these presentations, but he is currently out of the office with COVID. And I am back from my 10-day quarantine from getting COVID from Jason. So I'm wearing the mask, so I hope no one here gets it from me. So I'm not, I passed my 10 days, but I'm hoping it ends with me. So. And for some reason, you can't hear me because of the mask, I'll try to scoot closer to the microphone. So the complicated part of this is I am giving Jason's presentation, so it's always fun to give someone else's presentation when you haven't made it. So that being said, we'll, we'll start off. So redistricting occurs every 10 years because of the census. Populations change, so things get, with your commissioners and at the city level, if you have wards, they, it all gets shaken up and the state leaves it to the commission or the city to sort out their representatives. So it all happens because of the census. The census comes through and people move and people are born, people die, and everything changes. So we pick up the pieces and census blocks are, what the census focuses on at the local level of things, it's the smallest area they look at. They're not based on population in an area. It's generally based on a geographic feature or a size or some kind of blocks. There are blocks across the country where there are zero people living in them because they're in the middle of the desert or the middle of the mountains or that kind of thing. So that's kind of census blocks. And the census blocks, when you try to do redistricting, of course, your most basic information is those census blocks. So that's kind of the blocks you have to put together to build the district. So the concept of redistricting is based on the idea that everyone that lives in Lincoln County should be, have an equal voice, so you should have an equal say in who your representation is. So trying to divide it up, ideally, in a situation, say, your county had 3,000 people and you had three commissioners, you would want each commissioner to represent roughly 1,000 people, just so everyone's voice is equal. But that's, while that's, that's good in notion, it's hard in practice just because you don't have people spaced out equally, kind of like a checkerboard. There, everyone, there's five people in a house and there's one person in the house and there's no people in that house and there's 10 people in that house. So it doesn't work out quite like the checkerboard, so you have to kind of arrange it differently. So state, state law doesn't say a whole lot about percentages, but it's my understanding that 10% is kind of a judicial court where they would like to see the one person, one vote thing. Where the 10% comes from, you have fluctuations in your districts. They don't want the one with the highest amount of people and the one with the lowest amount of people to be more than 10% apart. Just so every, the concept of your vote matters just as much as your neighbor's and their vote matters just as much as yours. So that's where that kind of comes from. So roughly, so if, and this example gives 1,000 people, so you'd want, so the ideal number is the direct math, but because it's not the checkerboard, it's, you generally won't end up with perfect space districts. So we try to make it so it comes out as equal as we can. And in this case, in this example, there's overpopulation by 8%, so, and there's underpopulated by seven. So this has a lot of examples, but, so the way it kind of works is, so District One, in this example, is overpopulated by eight. And then the next district has, is underpopulated by seven. So you would look at the difference between you have eight above and you have seven below. So the difference would be greater than the 10 spread, so it wouldn't work. You'd have to find some way to five and five or two and eight, somewhere to keep the 10 between the highest and the lowest. It's a lot of statistics stuff that Jason is a lot better at than I am, but that's kind of where the numbers flesh out. There's no perfect science in the proposed maps. We, it's more or less trying to find something that works and do the best you can to make sure everyone's vote counts equally. So we've prepared all sorts of, or Jason has prepared all sorts of examples. And if, I believe this one is if you kept your existing districts exactly as they are, the problem that you would end up with is even though Lincoln County is growing, which is, is a good thing and a bad thing depending on how you want to look at it. Some people will see, you can make arguments probably either way, some people will find a way to do it. But every one of your districts has grown in population and some more than others, so that throws off the equality among your commissioners, so that's, it's trying to rebalance. So this is how things have grown. Some quite a bit more than others. District Two's grown by a little less than 1,000, whereas Five and One have grown quite a bit. So you would want District Two people to still have the same representative vote as a District Five person. So this is kind of what Jason looked at when he came up with the way the proposals are situated. He looked at, you didn't want to have one part of a district all on the other side of some major feature and just some little isolated part on the other. You kind of want to keep communities together. You want to, and that goes into the keeping the districts compact and contiguous is all together. So you want, generally, you want to try to keep things the same, but you want to have places that identify as a community to still be that community. You, he wanted to minimize changes to current districts. People get used to their community and they want to keep it. And the goal was to keep the current commissioners in the district they currently represent and try to keep it within that 10 range from going beyond that. So this is what Jason used to prepare the five maps, and at this point, it is kind of the commission's decision with the public's input to decide how they would like to redraw the maps. So those maps are, there are five examples or five, that doesn't necessarily have to be the one you choose. It's, those are just examples of how you can do it, so it's kind of up to you what you all think.
Do you have those five maps, those part here, that you can put up on the screen and talk about them a little bit?
So if anyone wants to see some of the maps just up close in front of you, there are copies on the table up here as well.
Thank you.
So there's, I think you might want to just do the detail ones.
Yep.
So just click on those.
Okay.
Thank you.
So as I said, this is not an exact science that it must be this way or it must be that way. These are just ways to do it. There are probably pros and cons to each, and I imagine your auditor could speak better to that based on how cities divide up theirs, just so everyone's ballot doesn't have to have five different things on it. But, so this is alternative one. This is what Jason came up with. It, there's, this, it's an example of how to lay it out based on population to try to keep things close to what they are, but reflect how population has changed. And in Lincoln County, for better or worse, you are very top-heavy with Sioux Falls having a large portion of your county population.
Yeah, thank you. And I don't know, Sherri, do you want to speak to these alternatives and?
I can, yeah.
Do you want to do that?
Yep, so all the alternatives split up the districts with exception of the option four. So when, now I got to figure out which one I'm on. So there's alternative one. We've got a total deviation of 4.85, but you'll notice that the City of Harrisburg is in three different districts, commissioned districts. And...
And that would be one, two, and three? Is that correct?
Yep, and then, what did I do with four? Okay, so alternative two, you'll see Harrisburg is still outside. District Four is pulled down to 279th Street. Lennox, Worthing, and Canton are all in, and Fairview and Hudson are all in the same district. That's a 5.34 deviation. Oh, my gosh. What did I do with three? Alternative three is it includes the cities. They wrapped Harrisburg all into one district, so it wouldn't be split. But then you see that that pulls District Two up into those townships up here. And then four, this one has the least amount of changes to the current precincts. It ends up with 210 splitting compared to the other ones that do more splits in them. And it also keeps the cities all in one district with a deviation of 6.2.
What was the deviation on that one?
On four?
Yeah.
Was 6.2.
Okay.
With District Two having the least and District Five having the most.
And that keeps Harrisburg all together?
Yep.
All right, do any of the commissioners have any questions of staff? If not, we'll move on to the public hearings portion of this agenda item. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to come up and comment or ask questions, we'll address those as best that we can. I'm going to ask that everybody keep their comments limited to three minutes, just so we can move, keep moving things along. Good morning.
Thank you, Jim Boland, resident of Lincoln County. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly today. I want to urge you to adopt an at-large plan for the election of county commissioners for the following reasons. And I couldn't, I just kind of dovetailing off what the gentleman from CCOG was talking about, about equality as far as voting is concerned. First, the current system of districts for each commissioner is no longer workable or effective in Lincoln County. The current population pattern has seen all or almost all the growth in the far northern portions of the county. That means that to balance the population for commissioner districts, almost all the rest of the geography of the county is represented by one commissioner, while the densely concentrated voters in a very small geographical area of the county elect the majority of the members. That seems somewhat dubious to me. County government is designed to primarily, but not exclusively, it's designed to meet the needs of those who live outside the boundaries of cities and towns. The current population patterns in our county make the current district plan fundamentally flawed, no matter how it is shaped, again, considering the population patterns of recent growth and this, which is somewhat unique to Lincoln County over the last 20 years or so. Secondly, when a majority of the commissioners are elected exclusively from areas and by voters that have minimal contact with rural and small-town interests, the potential exists that the interests of the small towns and rural people will be limited. This may or not occur, but the potential is clearly evident. Therefore, I believe we will benefit the entire county, both rural and urban, with an at-large election system where every commissioner is explicitly elected by all the voters of the county. By making this needed fundamental and positive change, all the commissioners will be linked to all the voters. The district system works well when you have a stable population pattern that is exhibited in many of our smaller rural counties across the state, and it's worked well for a while here in Lincoln County. However, when you have a major shift in population, especially when it's concentrated in certain geographical areas, that system of districts is no longer adequate to meet the needs of the public. Please make the positive decision at some point in the future to adopt an at-large system for the election of Lincoln County commissioners. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Chad Skiles, 820 North Dakota Street here in Canton. Just a couple of things that I would like to mention and talk on. First off, I want to thank the commission for the five, this being the fifth public meeting and allowing public input into this big decision that has to be made. I thought, being one of the few people that attended all five of the meetings, I thought there was some pretty good input from the citizens, both in the northern part of the county, the more densely populated area, and in the southern part, less populated area of the county. I want to personally thank Commissioner Gibbon, who attended all five meetings, Commissioner Schmidt, who attended all five meetings, to Commissioner Aaron's, who attended four plus one by phone. I got that one in there, Commissioner Aaron's. As far as where we're at, I see two ultimate options. One, we stay with the districting. One, we go with the at-large. Both ideas have their pros and cons. I'm not going to say where I'm at either way on the decision. I, but I just hope that the commission will take into consideration all of the public input that was received and heard at the different meetings. Initial, initially, I will say that I was completely convinced that we needed to stay districts, but after listening to a lot of input, I obviously see the advantages to an at-large in Lincoln County as well. So I, I ask for the commission to go this way. With the district options, to me, there's only one clear one that probably even needs to be considered, and that is number four, simply because that's the one that most closely follows splitting precincts versus the at-large option. So I'm looking forward to commission discussion on this and to see where it goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come up and make comment?
Chad, thank you for attending all five as well, because there are many of you in here that have done that.
David Gillespie. Good morning.
Good morning.
1125 East Elder Street, Canton, South Dakota. I was on the commission for 12 years. When I first ran, I had four townships in '08. And in '10, when I ran again, in the, in the 10 districting segment, we went from, we had two picks, 11 townships or 13. We had a vote, a majority vote, to go with the 13 townships. And District Two was large then. Now it looks like it's even going to go larger. And with, with 16-plus counties going at-large in South Dakota, I think the time has come for Lincoln County to look at it and large redistricting. And I think by 2032, and I agree with Senator Boland over here, the time has come where we will have to make a decision to look at it and large pick. So with that, that's all I have. But the growth will, it'll be worse by 2032 to stay in, in separate districts. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience want to come up and make comment?
Hi, Betty Otten, T. I also attended all five, and I want to thank all of you that attended all five of them specifically. I'm definitely all-in for the at-large position. I know some of you have said that you're really not for that, but again, Minnehaha County is all at-large, and the at-large redistricting, I believe, is fairness for the entire county. And I know that, it's always brought up that you guys, even though you live in Sioux Falls, you represent the entire county. And I understand that. However, I think that the entire county needs to vote on who represents us in Lincoln County, not because if it's in districts, only those people in those districts can run and only those people in those districts can vote. If you do an at-large, then everybody gets to vote and everybody has the opportunity to run when you guys have decided that you're not going to. So anyway, thank you for your participation. Thank you for making them public, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going ones, come on up.
Hi, Eric Holman from Canton, South Dakota. Thank you for, for hearing us, and I deeply appreciate, this is my first time. I'm going to maybe go in a little bit different direction. I, I believe the at-large would be great, but if that was to default and, and not work in your eyes, if we go to the districting where there's several plans that have been proposed, there's two of them that caused me great concern. Number two and number five, in my opinion, would take away the voice, the rural voice. And I'm not going to call it gerrymandering because that's too ugly of a term, but you know, if, on the federal level, we are very fortunate. We are, we have such a small population in South Dakota, but yet we do have a voice in the House of Representatives. We have one voice. It's insignificant, but at least we have a voice and, and, and our concerns are heard. I feel that, that that is important for, on a smaller scale in Lincoln County, that the folks that are outside of the immediate Sioux Falls metro area, I think we're still part of the MSA, but you know, we're really, we're still rural folks here and, and all of the, the ag producers that are, that are outside, that are south of the Harrisburg Sioux Falls area, you know, they need a voice. And if, if we were, if we were to, to, to adopt number five, that would be no different than on a federal level if we had stripes, corduroy stripes going across the United States. We would maybe have an opportunity to have, to vote in, in the state of South Dakota, three or four representatives. But we wouldn't because the coasts would, would negate our, our voice because we would be overpowered by, by their numbers. So I'm going to leave it up to you to figure out what it is, but I would just like to voice a concern for two and, two and five. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
Marlene Sweder, 47158 283rd Street, Worthing, South Dakota. Having been a part of everything that has been involved with the commission for many years, I will say initially, after going to a couple of the meetings, I did think that probably at-large was a good choice. But then I spent some time listening to some of the meetings and to see that probably number four would be a good option for us, still to have some representation. I know it leaves a lot of space for District Two, but I think to have their own representation is probably still a good choice for us. At-large may be coming, but at this point, I, my suggestion would be option number four. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you for that. We will be actually voting on this when, Sheri, February? Can you come up and tell us a little more about, about the rest of the process?
Okay, so December 14th through January 11th, we're going to have open comment period. We've got comment cards on the table. We've also got them on the website. So if you'd fill them out and get them to us, to the auditor's office, then what I'm going to do is I'm going to compile all the comments, give it to, as a briefing packet, to the commissioners. January 11th, the board will authorize us to advertise for a meeting to be held on February 1st to do the vote for the redistricting. And it has to be finalized by February 1st, so.
All right. I'll just finish up with asking if any of the commissioners have any questions for staff.
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions, and I commend everybody that's here and have made their opinion. But when you look around this room today, how many people are from the north end of the county? How many people, when you got your population up there? And I, well, I haven't made an opinion one way or the other. But what concerns me is if you do vote at-large, how many of those individuals that live there, which is the majority of the population, are aware of that situation? When we recently had an election, I had, I don't know how many calls and people that said, "I didn't even know we were having an election. Why don't you people inform us?" Well, as I've told some of you, I think when we were in Sioux Falls, where we had nobody from that area showed up for the redistricting. It's a real concern of mine because those individuals, like it or not, carry the burden of the tax, paying for the taxes for the county. And how we educate them is, in my mind, very important because they have every right to know what's going on in our county as well as everybody else. So I'm not, I don't have any answers. If any of you have some ideas, we publish our stuff in our local papers, our, our local ones, whether it's in Canton or Beersford or Lennox or, or T. And we put our minutes in the Argus Leader. But as far as educating the individuals on what this would mean for them, I'm left wanting on if they know we have a website. But I wish there was some way in which we could engage all of the taxpayers of Lincoln County in this whole process. And, and so far, I'm going to take the blame. I've talked to a lot of them. I've walked a few neighborhoods. I've tried to educate people, but you know, you've got, you've got apartment places that are living up there in, by the hundreds. Half of them don't even know they live in Lincoln County, or do they care, I guess, for that matter? So you know, this is going to be, well, we're going to have to spend some time thinking about this in the long run. But I appreciate all your comments.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt? Thank you for your comments. I want to thank, I really do want to thank everybody who participated and attended in these meetings. It was a master class in public participation, and we received some really great comments. And this is the example of how we ought to do things in terms of soliciting public opinion because we really have learned things that we wouldn't have learned through, you know, for example, three- to five-minute public comments at these kinds of meetings. And so we really learned a lot, and that is thanks to the people who have participated. Commissioner Schmidt, what I would say is if you want to hear from more of the people, hold town hall meetings. I think I've held four or five now, and I've had at least a dozen people show up to each of them. And you can really find out what people are thinking when you make a concerted effort to make sure that people come to you and talk to them, talk to you. And I've learned things by doing these town hall meetings that you wouldn't ordinarily learn about. And I'll tell you this, in South Dakota, people will shoot you straight. So they'll give you the straight stuff and they'll tell you what you're really thinking. So that's how we, you know, we, we can't, as elected leaders, sit back and wait for people to come to So that's how we, you know, we, we can't, as elected leaders, sit back and wait for people to come to us. We have to meet people where they are. And you do that by making a concerted effort to go to them as opposed to, you know, it's the old Mohammed in the mountains story, right? You have to go to them. And so this really has been instructive for me in terms of, there are a lot of people out there who care very deeply about what the future of their county looks like. With regard to the redistricting issue, what I would say is if anybody is worried about the size of the districts, the, there's only going to be one day in which the districts are proportional and that's on day one. After that, you are going to see phenomenal growth in the Sioux Falls area. And it's not going to stop and it's only going to continue and it's going to be tremendous. We just had a presentation last week saying that once the city of Sioux Falls builds the Southeast Sanitary Sewer District out, they're anticipating 70,000 people eventually, not all at once, of course, who will live in the joint jurisdictional area. And that effectively is my district. Now, I don't think 70,000 people are going to grow up there overnight nor be there in the next 10 years. But the fact of the matter is, and I think Senator Boland called this spot on, is how population growth is going to be controlled in this county and it's through planning and zoning. And right now, population growth is being throttled and it's being throttled by the city of Sioux Falls. And so the city of Sioux Falls is going to, going to control what that population growth looks like. And they want it to grow from north, from the north moving south. And I also think that you're not going to have that kind of tremendous growth in the southern end of the county. And so for those worried about people having, the ag community having a voice, I know it sounds counterintuitive, but you're, you have a equal opportunity to have a voice for the ag community by going at-large. It sounds counterintuitive, but you're not guaranteed equal results in elections. But you are guaranteed equal opportunity in elections. And if you give everybody the opportunity to run for all the spots, you've got an equal opportunity for all voices to be heard. And so I am moving pretty solidly towards wanting to support an at-large system because the deviations are going to be out of whack on day one. And so you saw the population growth there in District One, my district, 9,000 10 years ago and 15,000. It's going to look just like that again, even worse 10 years from now. And I don't want those people's voices to be watered down. I don't want anybody's voice to be watered down. So I think, you know, democracy is about showing up to the polls and about showing up to the elections. And we ought to give everybody an equal opportunity to run for these offices. And the last thing I'll say, elections are about accountability. So if you're going to make decisions that affect the whole county, why not be accountable to the whole county? You know, that's the way the founding fathers set up our system, is they wanted accountability and that's what elections do. So let's just be accountable to all the citizens of the county for all the decisions we make, regardless of whether we represent one district or not. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners would like to comment?
I think it's been an interesting process. When I think of our first meeting that we had in Harrisburg, there seemed to be a trend where they were supporting a vertical division in our county. And that was quite interesting. We had a second meeting in Lenox and it seemed to be there a little more support for at-large. Our third meeting in Sioux Falls, there was no one there from, from that particular district. And so, you know, some of us that were there had been at previous meetings and expressed again some of the good things and reservations of all the plans. Last week in T, I think there was more support probably for at-large and for number four. And today, I, you have been here and you've heard some of the same things. Some of the at-large and number four seems to be one of the things that is a support among people. So it has been interesting. I think that I, I'm still curious to see the, the particular comments made on our comment cards yet and so on and so forth. I think Commissioner Ernst has made some good, good reservations or observations. And at the same time, I know that, you know, the, the growth is everywhere. I, I look at my area and I think over about a four-mile stretch, there's 24 residents, 24 places of homes, of family residence, and about half of them have been new since the last four years or three years. And I mean, there's houses going up even now. So the, the growth is, is, is coming. And you know, especially along county roads, and I think it will continue. People enjoy the particular lifestyle that we have in Lincoln County and the, and the fact that they can purchase property on a 40-acre track and so forth. So I, I don't think it's going to stop in the southern part of the county either. So again, I think for those, very thankful for the people here today that made comments about any of the plans. And I look forward to even more comments and phone calls or whatever it might be over the next six weeks.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item eight on our agenda, which is a first reading.
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as Lot 1 Dakota Steel Edition, East half of the northeast quarter, Section 31, Township 97 North, Right 49 West, from the A1 Agricultural District to the I-1 Light Industrial District and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. Location is 29029477th Avenue.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Applicant owner for this application is Grand Valley Properties LLC. Location of this property is approximately seven and a half miles northeast of the city of Beersford. Parcel size is 6.77 acres. The purpose for this application, if I can get back here a little bit. The purpose of this application is Dakota Steel is proposing to build a 100-foot by 250-foot warehouse building. This would be an expansion of their business that they currently operate to the north, which is adjacent to the property. The board has set the second reading, public hearing for this ordinance amendment for the 28th. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Toby, what does it actually mean by changing the zoning from what they present have to light industrial? What is the actual change that incurs?
So as you can see, the adjacent property to the north is where they're currently operating on I-1 Light Industrial. They approached the office to construct the warehouse-type building. The current property zoning is A1 Agricultural. Warehousing is not a permitted, permissive, conditional use in the A1 Agricultural District. So in order to issue a building permit to construct this and allow them to expand, it would have to be re-zoned to I-1 Light Industrial. Planning Commission did an affirmative motion on this. That affirmative motion was denied unanimously. So their recommendation is to not approve this application.
Toby, what, when is the next reading?
Your next meeting on the 28th.
On the 28th. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item nine on our agenda.
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as Lot 4 Hoffman's Edition, Southwest Quarter, the Southwest Quarter, Section 31 Township 100 North, Right 50 West, from the A1 Agricultural District to the I-1 Light Industrial District and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. Location is parcel number 15031J004.
Okay, thank you. The applicant owner of this is Double H Land Company LLC. This property is approximately 1,300 feet to the south of the city of T Corporate Limits. Parcel size is approximately 2.27 acres. The purpose of this application is that the owners intend to operate a concrete asphalt recycling facility on the property. Like the previous application, you've scheduled the second reading, public hearing for this ordinance amendment for your next meeting on December 28th. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have for staff at this time.
This is not meant to be premature. Have they talked to their neighbors?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to item 10 on our agenda. We had, we're looking at the highway superintendent moving out to the highway building. I went out there and looked around with what the space needs are. And I don't know if Terry is anywhere around. Sherri, can you, see if you can get him in here? There's not enough space out there for him right now as it currently sits. The front area has a small conference room that seats four, I'd say four people comfortably. There's not really a video conferencing system or anything like that out there. Jared's office is there and there is a reception area. There's no area for storage of the files. And it's my understanding that even downstairs, his storage capability is at max capacity. So in speaking with, with our highway superintendent, I think some kind of addition would need to be built on and go out to the west to give them the room that they need to move him out there as well as have storage facility. And we also talked about future growth as far as whether, I know there's been discussions about sometime in the future of the county possibly hiring their own engineer to have office space out there for the engineer. So wondering what the board is thinking if we want to have Arc Designs did the original building or Arc Inc., excuse me, if we want to have them give us some prices on what they would cost, what it would cost to design something out there for them. Terry, do you want to explain what the space needs are that you're seeing if you move out to the highway shop?
So currently, space-wise, we would have room to put Rayanna, my admin, out there. There is space out there for her. But the, the small conference room we have would not be large enough office space for myself. That's the only other space we have out there for office space, is that conference room, basically. And then I do have a vault downstairs where we have all of our project plans from beginning of time for roads and bridges and such. So we would need some storage for that as well. So I guess the needs, what we do in that conference room now is we do evals, employee evals out there. Employee reprimands if they happen and we do job interviews out there as well, so.
Terry, would we be able to accomplish those? I mean, do we need to build on or could we just reorganize?
So reorganize the space you have?
Yeah.
The only way, no, you would not be, there, there's not room to reorganize unless you take the, the training room or the break room, the conference, the, you know, for the employees, for staff. Unless you take that, take that out. But then where are they going to have their meetings?
Right.
Yeah, if you go out, I mean, if you've, if you've been out there, there's a kitchenette area and a, kind of a U-shaped training table room. And when that's full, it's full, isn't it?
Yes. Well, yeah, if we can get fully staffed, then, then it's full in there.
So if, I mean, if we hire on or if there's growth in that, in the highway department and all that, I don't see. And we looked at, you know, whether you could cut off part of that. We talked about making the conference room that's sitting there into a hallway and doing a bump-out addition on the west side to give those office spaces. And I think what we were talking about, was it three offices?
Yeah, so per earlier this year, when, when I had my discussion with Arc Inc., when, when the, the building committee was going on, I guess future growth for my department as far as office staff, I think at, at some point, we could, we could surely have the discussion of hiring on our own full-time engineer. I believe at this point in time, we, we would be able to keep them busy enough and the money that we, we would probably save that money rather than spending it out of house, we could do some of that in-house. So that would be one additional staff. The second additional staff, again, you know, if you're looking out 10 years, if you're going to have an engineer, then you could, you could possibly have, you know, like a CAD person that has an engineering, but it's not an engineering degree or a land surveyor. Because then you could take care of a lot of your surveying needs in-house.
And then you have some, was there just some computer stations at the back of the training room that are used? Can you explain kind of who uses those?
So currently, right now, there, there are two, two computer stations set up at the, at the rear of that, comp the training room where the employees are. That's where they enter in their times for time sheets daily. So you know, as far as additional space needs, currently, I have a fairly good-sized conference room down in the office now. I would probably need something like that since we do bid openings. And we'll fill that room up when I, when I have bid openings with contractors coming in for bid openings. You know, so you'd need a large space to, to have bid openings again. To me, it wouldn't make sense to have bid openings come up here. You'd have to try to find a space that's available up here to do bid opening, so we'd just do it out at the shop if, if I had to move out there, so.
What do you think it's going to cost to add on this amount of space that you think you need?
I, I, again, I don't, I'm not up with the building costs. I, I don't have an idea, Joel. I, I, I just.
What's the square footage you need?
And again, I guess that's something that, that, I know, I guess, I would, I would look to something comparable to what I have now. I guess I haven't looked at square footage of where I am now.
John, do you know, do you know what the square footage is down there?
I mean, and if you're going to add, add two additional in the next 10 years, if you wanted to add on growth for them two offices or, but.
I, I guess, like, short answer is I don't have an, an actual square footage. But are you just talking his office space with the storage of, his small storage or?
He would need storage, he would need his office and he would need a conference room. And then potentially one or two office spaces for a CAD operator or engineer.
I think we have, do we have those numbers when we met with Arc Inc. as a potential future need within the next 10 years?
They might have.
I think we do have his potential growth needs for the 10-year, uh, step out, you know? So we, that, I could go find that number probably.
You're probably looking at under 2,000 square feet, right?
Oh, right.
Typical office size is three, three times three, 900, plus this other office storage space, plus your space downstairs. It creeps up to about, just about 2,000 square foot, doesn't it?
Two, 2,000, 2,500 square feet maybe is what I would say off the cuff, but I, you know, without really discussing it anymore, I don't.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. If the board wants, we can have, we could ask Arc Inc. to go out there and look at it. And, but they're going to, obviously, they're going to want to be paid for their time. What they would charge us to just go out there and take a look at what the space needs are and what they would charge us to, you know, do that and maybe come up with something, whether it's a bump-out or maybe, maybe standalone is less expensive. I, I don't know the answer to that question, that you be out there, but maybe it's a standalone office. I know Commissioner Schmidt had talked about maybe even government.
Government.
Housing that was available that could go out there. And you could design that the way you wanted to, the interior of it. I'll let him speak to that if he'd like to.
I checked with South Dakota Housing and municipal governments have an option to purchase at a very nominal fee the exterior of a governor's house. And then you have to design the, your own office situation. And a three-bedroom home is about, oh, shy of 1,500 square feet that you would have space inside, that's inside dimensions. So if you put three office, three offices in there and a, and a conference room, I don't know how that would, how that would work. They do have the ability, if you got a sketchy design, for example, Terry, and you wanted to send that off, they could give you several different variations that they have available from their design people. And then they can give you an estimate on what the cost, actual cost would be. You buy the particular thing. You buy the particular thing and you have two choices. You can have them design it, they can do it, and they have inmate labor that does that. But there is a cost. Or you can do it yourself if you want to, and they can deliver the box. And then you have to pay, or whoever buys it delivers the actual building to the site you chose. So, and that's just stuff. You'd put a slab on grade, it would, it would be an independent building, it would have its own heating system, its own, you know, it's, it's a house. It's basically what it's built to be, so.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's some consensus to have Terry go to ARC Inc. and see what they would charge to go out and come up with a plan for Terry to move out there so we could get some costs put together.
Well, at this point, we're just spitballing the whole thing. I'd like to get some, I'd like to find out what it would cost so we can make some evaluations on what, well, how we should move forward. That'd be my particular wish.
Terry, can you, you want to call ARC Inc. and have them maybe come in and talk to us about what they would need to look at that?
You want to, you want to have them at the next meeting then to?
Well, I think so. Usually we would, you know, we'd have some contract, we'd hire them for professional services to go out there and come up with a plan. They're going to want something, I'm sure, in advance of that.
I can contract, Andrew.
Okay. Is everybody okay with ARC Inc. since they did the original building?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
All right.
Move on to item 11 on our agenda. We had talked about, at the last meeting, hiring an engineer to do some survey work out at that T property. I don't know if there's anybody here in particular to speak on that issue. And I'm, it's on my, my agenda item, but I don't know, do we have somebody in mind?
Did you see the briefing form that I attached on there?
Well.
Yep.
Originally, I had reached out to IMAG about it. And they said that they could do the survey for $2,000 to $2,500. It would include the outside boundary platted and marked in the field. They'd also locate the flood zone so they can determine the buildable areas.
Yeah, Madam Chair, and I can speak to this as well.
Go ahead.
I sat down and had multiple conversations with Marcus Malin. He believed that taking this step would make the property not only more marketable, but gives him the ability to market the property as well as our realtor. And, you know, just having experience with selling these properties, and, you know, I'd agree with him. I think that's the logical next step forward here, given the fact that, you know, the land is, it's a diverse piece of land, I'll just call it that. So I think it'd be helpful to have the survey done.
And who would we be hiring?
I, I don't have any person or entity in mind. I mean, it's, it sounds like a professional service. And it sounds like contacts have been made with IMAG already by the auditor. So, you know, you can throw a rock and hit surveyors and engineers.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with IMAG doing it. I mean, is that, if we're going to do it, we need to make, we need to have a motion. That was a number, the numbers they gave you, Sherry?
I'll move to hire AMAG, excuse me, IMAG to survey the property.
I'll second that.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Move on to item 12 on our agenda.
I believe we also need to appoint a commissioner as a direct contact for this project, yes?
I'd prefer it, yeah.
I think since that is Commissioner Poppins' area and he's not here, that I think we appoint Commissioner Poppins. Thoughts?
Don't care.
Do you want to ask, you want to ask Commissioner Poppins if he's willing to do that?
Yes.
All right. What do you got, Sherry?
So the Department of Revenue did a review of the budget and the budget resolution, and we found an error, or, well, they found an error on line 311 in the revenue portion of the budget. I had the line stated as $14,278,961, current property taxes on the budget worksheet, and $14,275,303 on the resolution. There's a decrease of $3,658. The $14,275,303 is our growth in CPI number, so we need to make a change on the budget for that. Also, with the roll fire, I had it listed as 91,575, and it should have been 91,546. So I just need a motion to, well, to make the changes on the budget.
All right. Further requests or motion?
I'll move to adjust 2022 budget per review as per what the auditor just said.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. And then Sherry, you can handle item 13?
I am. So we received the money from, it's the Rural Access Infrastructure Fund. We received $52,328.
We skipped 13.
Okay.
15.
That's the digital timer controversy.
That's going to be Jim.
All right.
We basically, I put everything down in the.
You gave, you gave me a cheat sheet.
I gave him a cheat sheet.
And I'll, I'll read it, since we had some issues. Over the past years, a timer has been requested by several chairs and committee leaders. In the commission chambers, there is a timer hanging on the wall that we attempted to implement several years ago. It was difficult to use and did not effectively serve our purpose for public meetings. A plan was set into place to replace the timer with a more feature-rich timer that is similar to what the city of Sioux Falls uses. The new timer came at a cost of $1,117, which was budgeted as an AV upgrade for the commission chambers. The timer is a tool to assist the board and public in determining how much time they have during public comment per the public comment policy that was unanimously passed on 9/12/2018. Similar requests also came from various public committees and commissioners to help aid in creating a uniform process in hiring comments or concerns during meetings. The timer is used by the clerk of the board, who starts the timer when a person begins to speak. The light will stay green until the countdown reaches one minute remaining. At that time, it will switch to yellow, and when time runs out, it will switch to red. So that's kind of the background of why it was proposed to put in. And that was the cost that we incurred under, putting it under the AV upgrade. So that's the purpose of that, three buttons up there.
All right, thank you. Now, Sherry, we'll move on to item 14.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
Commissioner Schmidt, I just have a question about that. With regard to that timer thing, it says it was budgeted as an AV upgrade. But we never talked about that, did we? About actually purchasing it and installing it, did we?
Well, I don't know. I, I, was it part of a budget issue? I don't know that, you know, it's not as hu- huge a significant expenditures. But as far as did we debate or did we talk about that? No. I look at it pretty simply as if there are certain things that can make it more efficient for the commission or for the public, maybe that's just something we, we do. I mean, because it's, if it isn't a huge budget item. But as far as did we ever debate on it? I don't recall, to be very honest with you, I don't.
Well, frankly, every time we have claims reports, we have two or three pages of claims, all of which we don't talk about in our meetings. So I, I don't know what the point is you're trying to make, but we're going to move on to item 14.
Well, I'd like to.
Point of order, Commissioner Aaron's, we're on item 14. You do not have the floor.
So we received funds from the Rural Access Infrastructure. It was $52,328,81. This was to be, to complete an inventory of the small structures within townships. The highway department made the decision that they would do the inventory of the small structures in an effort to save money on, and make it all uniformal. As of December 10th, approximately 75% of the townships are completed. The cost to date is $3,260.92. So what I'm requesting is that we do the transfer from Rural Access Infrastructure Fund to the corresponding highway funds to re, get their money back to them.
Madam Chair, I would so move on that request.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Go ahead and move on to item 15 on our agenda. Was Fran gonna handle that or?
No, it's Ethan.
Okay. Oh, come on up, Ethan.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I was given this this morning. This is the first time I was aware of this situation, actually, so you'll have to just bear with me here. But there was an application for an abatement of a property where there were some buildings removed. And so I believe you guys should have that abatement application. And, you know, our part of this abatement or our, a part of the assessment portion of this is to, you know, verify that the structures were there or not there. And so we have done our research, and we can tell through some of the satellite imagery, you know, that we've discussed in previous meetings, made good use of that in this situation. But anyway, it did disappear somewhere between 2017 and 2020 because we don't have a flyover every year. So, you know, I guess we are recommending that you guys do abate this property, but it's up to you, the law reads that you may abate it or you may not. It is up to the property owner to inform us when a building is constructed or removed. And we weren't notified about this until this fall. But apparently, the buildings were moved back in 2019, so.
And you were notified by the landowner?
Yes, in fall of 2021.
Okay, all right. We've heard the request to approve the refund, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. You handling 16 as well? We have approval of a refund of the $770.54?
Yeah, this is from the same property owner.
Same issue?
Same issue. Same property.
Okay.
Just two years.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Bill, did we have any requests for executive session today?
Thank you.
All right, I know that we need to go in under SDCL 125-2 sub 1. Do we need any other provision, Bill? Okay, so also SDCL 125-2 sub 3. I need a motion to that effect?
I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second to come out of executive session. Sean, call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes. We're now out of executive session, back into regular session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Second. Motion and second, Sean, call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes, thank you, we're adjourned.